With Mayor Leavson at the, at a commission meeting in, where is it, out in the hills. It is my privilege to call to order the city council for our meeting on July 23. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronan.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunzness.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leavson.
We have a quorum, we are competent to proceed. First item would be consideration of the minutes of our meeting of July 16, 2018. Are there any amendments or corrections? We have a motion to approve by Bunzness, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rux. No discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries. No one has signed up for open forum, even though I tried to encourage Alisa to do so. Next item would be a consideration of the consent calendar, items A through E inclusive. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved Remley, seconded by Olson. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the consent calendar is approved. Under new business, first item is a consideration of ordinance 180701, possible first reading. This is an ordinance to rezone, and that would be yours Brett?
Yes.
Would you care to address it?
Sure. The property is located at 116 First Street North, requesting a rezone from Central Business District to High Density Residential District. In order to bring the property into a zoning district that is consistent with its residential use, staff and planning commission recommend approval.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Remley, seconded by Johnson. Is there any discussion? Roll call please Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye. Motion carries. We would then turn to item B, a request for property tax abatement for three properties in the city limits, and is that yours Carl?
Yes it is, thank you. These are pretty self-explanatory on the cover sheet, three items that the county sent over to us, because they are in the city limits, they have to be approved by the city. They all have been recommended by the Brown County Treasurer or by the Brown County Assessor's Office.
With the remotion to approve that abatement.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Bunzness, seconded by Olson. Is there any discussion? You know Carl, I would just ask, what is the standard for, what is the standard that has been applied for abating where there's a partial casualty loss? I'm thinking about the fire, I don't think I've ever seen one of those.
The assessor's office I understand goes and assesses what the damage is and what the value should be readjusted at. I did get that paperwork, I didn't include it because it got quite a bit of volume to it, but knowing that there was a fire on that property, it's pretty straightforward in those respects.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And that motion carries. Next item would be a request to declare cardiac monitor surplus property and approval of the request to do that, and Lynn, is that something you're going to address?
Yes, this cardiac monitor is over 10 years old, it was not eligible for a trade-in, and we've recently updated our equipment, so we would like to donate it to the South Dakota District 4 EMS Association, which includes Beadle County, Brown County, Day County, Edmonds, Falk, Han, Marshall, McPherson, and Robertson Spinks, so it may have benefit outside the city of Aberdeen.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Remley, seconded by Rux to approve the request, is there any discussion? See none, all in favor signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And that motion carries. Next item would be an application for a community event permit for fallout creative community and the mayor's advisory board for people with disabilities on July 27. Would there be a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Rux, seconded by Lunsman I think, David?
Robin or Lynn, is Second Street going to be done by the 27th?
We sure hope to have most of this stuff done by the end of the week.
Okay. Which is?
The 26th.
Okay. Saturday is the 27th, see?
They're hoping to have it done by Friday.
Will they go down and do that section by, from Second Street to Main first? Because it doesn't appear that you have any curb and gutter that you're replacing in that section.
This may be the last piece over here between Main and Lincoln.
Okay. Okay. Alright. They're going to need this area for this event, so.
I will make the contractor aware of the concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion is approved. Next item would be a consideration of bills presented to us for this evening. We have Northwestern Energy for $23,286. KG Investments, this is a refund from the Landscape Trust account in the amount of $3,720. The Brown County Treasurer closing out the city net in the amount of $1,274. We have Aberdeen Development Corp, also city net closeout in the amount of $1,274. Brick Markers USA, these are blocks for the Parks and Rec Department in the amount of $308. The Boys and Girls Club, the second quarter draw from the promotional fund in the amount of $50,000. Century League for July city phone charges, $4,147. J&amp;K Mowing Service for code enforcement abatements in the amount of $108. UPS for parcel pickups, pickup charges, $120. Morrison Construction Lime Sludge Removal at the Water Plant, $9,736. Dennis Corner Mileage and Meals for the Water Treatment Training Seminar, $203. South Dakota One Call for June Locates in the amount of $384. James Valley Co-op, this is for the third quarter cost for the Maple Skater Line that I had Carl explain to me yesterday, thank you, $97. Matheson Trigas, this is auction for the ambulances for $98. Fleet Services, monthly fuel charges for ambulances, $93. Conica Minolta, this is a copier lease charge for the Fire Department, $133. Verizon Wireless, monthly phone service charge for the airport, $32. And Born's Group postage for utility bills in the amount of $4,231. We would entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Johnson, seconded by Remley. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Could we please do a roll call?
You are absolutely right. Roll call please Carl. See, I can't write on my computer screen.
Thank you. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item would be payroll for the period of July 8 through July 21, including the city's share of social security, old age survivors insurance, retirement, health and insurance.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Lunsman, seconded by Olson. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye. That motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, we have two items this evening, the, one item would be snow removal operations comparison by Robin, but before we get into that report, Brett also submitted a report which I put in the managers' report, it was called 2018 Code Enforcement Nuisance Summary, and I just kind of like to highlight that because if you go through, it kind of shows you the impact of what code enforcement is actually doing. When I go through and you look at the totals from January to June, there's been 816 notices done through that time period, and 163 of those were actual complaints, so on average, we have at least two complaints a day about various different nuisance type activities, and we're issuing notices of about eight a day for activities throughout Aberdeen. And when I'm talking about enforcement nuisance summary, I'm talking about vehicles, and then, then you got snow during the winter time, you've got grass and yard waste, junk and garbage, furniture and appliances, building maintenance and miscellaneous. So from there, Robin spent a considerable amount of time putting together some comparison data, so I know that he has a work schedule he's going to make reference to that's on that board, as well as he has data that I submitted to you within the managers' report, and I'll pull it up as he speaks.
Okay. You've got the spreadsheet pulled up in front of you on your screen, this is a synopsis of what they submitted, these are the actual questions. The first one is a little bit misleading, what I did ask was what triggers a residential snowfall clearing, you know, what triggers their going out into the residential areas? That was a primary thought process, not an overall like emergency routes, things like that, but as you can see it very slightly, and there are three that come in at the two inch. Sioux Falls does the two and a half to three inch depending on winds and stuff like that, and I would say probably most everybody does not go strictly on snowfall event. There are some other factors like, like wind drifting type stuff that would trigger it even if you didn't hit the threshold. There are a couple others, Rapid City of course, their climate is somewhat unique, so they don't go out unless it really gets tough. Brett could probably attest to that, their thought process is far different than what we have here, and it's primarily because they get warmer for longer periods of time during the day, so. I asked a question about the residential, whether everybody gets the same level of service, and everybody said yes, and the reason for asking this is, we use strictly motor graders in all of our residential neighborhoods now. We did use truck plows to speed that up at one time, we found that we ended up with an awful lot of snowpack in some of those residential areas, it made it real difficult to keep those areas up, so. I asked that question to see what the general thought process, there are a few cities that use truck plows, but not very many, I see Brookings Dickinson and Mitchell use it, Spearfish and Brandon also. In my opinion, that's not the same level of service. You're clearing the road, but you're going to end up with a fair amount of snowpack on those roadways. Use of snow gates, I was surprised, I didn't realize that, as an example, Watertown has snow gates in some neighborhoods, and, but they don't have them in all neighborhoods. Bottom line is that there are cities who use them, and our thought process is that there's some slowing down of the overall process if you're using the snow gates, it just takes a little longer for those additional functions. Then, then the other thing was, we saw a huge variation in the amount of time to complete a residential, the residential clearing, and range low of six to eight hours, two, three to four days, and that's, that's quite a variance there. And a lot of that, you know, we would have been in that two day range anyway, and before we went to the, the one day clearing, and of course, once we went from a two day to a one day, that, I think the public's acceptance of our program improved quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Quite a few cities do lease equipment, many of them have their own equipment on hand. To keep our program up, you would end up owning 10 motor graders as it is right now, and that's, you wouldn't be able to put those to full use during the summer. It, to me, it's so difficult to justify having that many motor graders in your fleet. Ticketing and towing, there's a lot of cities that do ticketing and towing, although some of them said they rarely do it, some stating they only do it for the downtown. One stating that they do ticketing, but they rarely tow. And two that don't. And there again, everybody does things a little bit differently, six of them said that while they do ticketing and towing, that's not a public works function, that's a PD function. You take a look at the bottom, the complaints, and really the general statement is going to be with the, the types of complaints, everybody gets these types of complaints, or almost all of them get the same complaints for the same reasons. The level of, or the degree of which they get them varies by community to some degree. The whole point is that everybody's getting these types of complaints, you're, you're not avoiding them entirely.
Even with communities that have snow gates, they're getting complaints?
They're getting complaints about the snow in the driveway even though they use, and that was my experience when I was in Jamestown. We oftentimes had people call up and say, "Your operator obviously didn't drop the gate." But it was a heavier snow, you'd have stuff spilling over the top, or it was inevitable on those larger snows, and the general thought process was that you were going to have no snow, and that's not the case. These do not eliminate it, it reduces it.
Because I, I thought it was interesting when you looked at the snow window in driveway for Sioux Falls, it says it's a frequent complaint.
Mm-hmm. The expectations are that there will be no snow. So, and that kind of takes us back to the, you know, why, why would you use a snow gate? That's really kind of the, the beginning of the whole thing, is why would you use a snow gate? And it's basically to reduce or eliminate the ridge, both from the driveway and from the intersection, there are some advantages for the intersections. The disadvantage is going to be that you're, you're holding the snow for a period of time, you've got to get rid of it at some spot. So at the end of a driveway, you're going to open it up, especially with driveways that are, that are very wide, like the 36 feet wide driveways. On heavy snow, you aren't going to carry snow for 36 feet, you're going to end up having to open it up at some point. And typically, it's going to end up dumping at somebody's mailbox, or you're going to cover part of their driveway. The mailbox is another common and frequent complaint is mailboxes being, you know, really buried in snow. The other, the other thing is that for the intersections, you'll end up having a lot of this snow, you've cleared the intersection with snow, but where are you going to open it up? It's going to be where those handicapped quadrants are. That's another downside to it, you, you can only carry that snow so far, and there again, that 36 foot wide driveway is comparable to what the width of our streets are, and it gets to be too much snow, and when you open it up, it dumps it in a hurry out onto those quadrants, so. That's a downside to it, and of course, in a lot of communities, those quadrants are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to clear, so.
So what you're saying is they may get a clearer driveway, not entirely free of snow, but basically they're going to have to go out and shovel more on the quadrants, if you own a corner lot?
Yes, and or, yeah, the driveways generally, you'd say people probably are happier using the gates, but they're still going to be unhappy because parts of it they have to shovel, and it's going to be in front of their mailbox instead, which the mailman's not going to deliver until you go out and clear that, so. For those people who have mailboxes on their houses, that's not a big deal, but for those that have the mailbox downstream from their driveway, it's a problem.
Do we have a pretty small percentage of homeowners that have Knoll Boulevard where their sidewalk is right up to the street? Marshall Road, 13th, is that a pretty small percentage in this community?
I think you'd be surprised how much curbside sidewalk we have in town.
There's some on North Main, or up in the?
North Lloyd.
Parts of Goodrich.
McGovern. There, there's a lot more spots than you'd.
All the bike trails.
All the bike trails, yep. And, and there again, these, these gates are not a function that would be able to be utilized for sidewalks, you just can't carry the snow for that, for an entire block. You can only carry it for so far before you've got to rid it, or it's going over the top, out the sides, it's going to, it's, the snow has to go someplace.
Did you talk to other communities to get this information, or did you just look it up?
No, I sent, I sent emails to them, and then I visited with some of them.
Okay, so did they, did they say that it was a slower process?
I, yeah.
Okay.
Some of them will say no, the majority of them will say anywhere from 25 to 33% slower. And I think we, I'll, I'll come up on that here in a minute, but my thought process was 25% is a very good conservative number to use. One of the things that, this chart, or you can look at your, the spreadsheet that Marie had copied for you that you got handed out in front of you, these are the same thing. This is laid out in a continuous thing, so you can see kind of the gaps in where we don't do stuff where the spreadsheets, it's a little harder to follow, but, and this is a day one, day two, day three, I think yours shows Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but it's day one, day two, day three. Orange would be contractor, equipment, the blue would be city, equipment and manpower. Bottom line is that it's, it's fairly well orchestrated, we have, we have spots at each one of these, folks go, they do their thing, and by roughly 4:00 PM, we are done with our snow removal for the residential areas. If we reverse it and put them into the downtown area first, which is possible, it really doesn't change the timetable drastically, we're getting the, the downtown work done overnight, and then that next day, we're back into the residential's right away, but it's, the way we're doing it now, it's two different groups of people typically. Before, we used to use all of our guys, both the first shift and the second shift, with just a minimal four or five hour rest in between, and that was really, really hard on them. Number one, and number two, probably a lot less safe than we'd care to admit to. The third day is more of a cleanup process, working on cul-de-sacs, dead ends, if we have any downtown stuff, cleaning up our parking lots, if we haven't gotten it the first night, we're going to get in there and take care of it that, that third night, so. I think I did put in the discussion here, kind of how many people were utilizing, and we've got roughly 28 people I believe out that first, just the first phase, trying to get things done, and you've got, right now, we've got 13 motor graders going all at once, at the beginning, plus three, three loaders, three salt trucks, and so on. It's, there's a lot of people out there all at one time, you're roughly 30 guys out there, there it is. 28 members, and it goes through just the process, we, we do, I don't know if you've had a chance to read those comments, I didn't really want to dwell on it, other than just trying to make sure that you were aware how many people are out there all at one time. Part of the, part of the discussion was, you know, of course, the, the snow gate stuff, if you end up with 25% reduction in speed inefficiency, and part of that's due to the fact that you're going to have some breakdowns, part of it's due to the fact that there's more functions and those blades have to work a little harder and the operator's working harder, they're not able to drive quite as fast, or they're going to miss stuff. If that 25% is a reasonable number, and we're using 13 motor graders, we will probably use 16, or need 16 motor graders, or that process, we end up adding on how many hours at the back end, well, our crew is already at 12 hours with the way we're doing it right now. I would hesitate to push them to a 16 hour day in that range. So what would end up happening is, we would end up pushing it into a second day, which I don't think anybody would advocate, we certainly don't. The, so then, then it comes down to getting more equipment, more manpower, or more contractors. We're already using all the contractors that are bidding our work right now. There just isn't enough steady work for them to justify them owning the equipment, and, you know, for four, or five, or six snow removals, and last year was a great example, or two years ago, where we had zero snow removals. That's tough for a contractor to pay for $250,000 motor grader, so. That's, that's kind of the dilemma that they're in. So if, if we were to get contractors, chances are you would have to go to a guaranteed contract where they were at least going to cover their front end costs to gear up for it, and you wouldn't do that just for those, the newcomers coming in, that would be for all contractors that are helping you out at this time, so you could expect to have some additional fixed costs initially on your snow removal. If we decided to do it with our own crews, you're going to have additional fixed costs, and we're saying that probably an additional three motor graders. Our challenge with that is that we've already got a lot of our crews tied up, and you can't really throw everybody at it because we still have other functions to take care of, including water main breaks and so on. So, I did a, a quick summary on costs, and it looks like if you were to go the route of adding three additional motor graders into the mix, and trying to find some additional people to train in on motor graders, you'd have some costs in the neighborhood of $117,000 additional per year, on an average year, just to add that service. And, you know, the question is, is it worth it if you're going to get complaints on it anyway? Is, the, the amount of service you're getting from it worth the additional $117,000? That's the, the question.
Dean, when you were talking to these people, did they say what their increased maintenance costs were due to the more wear and tear, more weight, more, you know, those type of things?
You know, we didn't talk about that, but most of it, what we found is, if you've got decent equipment, it's probably not as high, or not, not terribly high rather, it's more welding or just welding on wear plates. If you've got older equipment like I had in Jamestown, it was a really frequent occurrence that where that blade would go, a blade would go down because of the gate. And there again, it wasn't a super amount of cost, it was just the downtime and how much frustration the crews had having to wait to get another repair made. One other thing that, that limitation that, that I hadn't touched on earlier was the fact that a snow gate by its design will push you a little bit further away from the curb, so by its design, it's going to cause the streets to narrow up a little quicker than the way we do it now, where the, the, our motor grader can rub the curb if we want to, they'll usually stay back just a little bit, but there's nothing to push them back. With the gate, you can't have it coming down on top of the ridge, so it pushes the motor grader operator slightly away from the window each and every snow, so it narrows up quicker.
You know, if we get those great big snows that we've had in the past where you can't even see the intersections, are they even usable?
No.
Even on a small snowfall?
Small snowfalls, you can still.
And after you have these great big.
Yeah, they're still usable.
Yeah, they are, okay.
Yeah. The, the limitation's going to be at that, let's say six inch or a little bit less snowfall, you're going to have a lot less effectiveness, there's going to be snow boiling over the top fairly quickly. When you get into those Walker snows, those 10 inches, a lot of the cities just, they just don't even try to use them because they're just, they're just not effective at all. Sioux Falls with, I think it was one of the last snows they had last spring, that was the first time that they've, since they started using their, their snow gate equipment, that they were not able to use the gates at all, because they were starting to see breakage on them, it must have been a heavier snow that, that was causing them grief. And-
You know, what, what triggers their going out into the residential areas? That was our primary thought process, not an overall like emergency routes, things like that. But as you can see it very slightly and, and there are three that, that come in at the two inch. Sioux Falls does the two and a half to three inch depending on winds and stuff like that. And I would say probably most everybody does not go strictly on snowfall event. There, there are some other factors like, like wind drifting type stuff that would trigger it even if you didn't hit the threshold. There, there are a couple others. Rapid City, of course, their climate is somewhat unique, so they don't go out unless it really gets tough. Brett could probably attest to that. Their, their thought process is far different than what we have here. And it's primarily because they get warmer for longer periods of time during the day, so. I asked a question about the residential, whether everybody gets the same level of service. And everybody said yes. And the reason for asking this is we use strictly motor graders in all of our residential neighborhoods now. We did use truck plows to speed that up at one time. We found that we ended up with an awful lot of snowpack in some of those residential areas. It made it real difficult to keep those areas up. So I asked that question to see what the general thought process. There are a few cities that use truck plows, but not very many. I see Brookings Dickinson and Mitchell use it, Spearfish and Brandon also. In my opinion, that's not the same level of service. You're clearing the road, but you're gonna end up with a fair amount of snowpack on those roadways. Use of snow gates. I was surprised. I didn't realize that as an example Watertown has snow gates in some neighborhoods and, but they don't have them in all neighborhoods. Bottom line is that there are cities who use them and our thought process is that there's some slowing down of the overall process if you're using the snow gates. It just takes a little longer for those additional functions. Then, then the, the other thing was we, we saw a huge variation in the amount of time to complete a residential, the residential clearing and range low of six to eight hours to three to four days. And that's, that's quite a variance there. And a lot of that, you know, we would have been in that two day range anyway and before we went to the, the one day clearing and of course, once we went from a two day to a one day, that I think the public's acceptance of our program improved quite a bit. Quite a few cities do lease equipment. Many of them have their own equipment on hand. To keep our program up, you would end up owning 10 motor graders as it is right now. And that's, you wouldn't be able to put those to full use during the summer. It, it, to me, it's a difficult to justify having that many motor graders in your fleet. Ticketing and towing, there's a lot of cities that do ticketing and towing. Although some of them said they rarely do it, some stating they only do it for the downtown. One stating that they do ticketing, but they rarely tow. And two that don't. And there again, everybody does things a little bit differently. Six of them said that while they do ticketing and towing, that's not a public works function, that's a PD function. You take a look at the bottom, the complaints. And really the general statement is gonna be with the, the types of complaints. Everybody gets these types of complaints or almost all of them get the same complaints for the same reasons. The level of, or the degree of which they get them varies by community to some degree. The whole point is that everybody's getting these types of complaints. You're, you're not avoiding them entirely.
Even with communities that have snow gates, they're getting complaints.
They're getting complaints about the snow in the driveway even though they use, and, and that was my experience when I was in Jamestown. We oftentimes had people call up and say, your operator obviously didn't drop the gate. But it was a heavier snow. You'd have stuff spilling over the top or it was inevitable on those larger snows. And the general thought process was that you were gonna have no snow. And that's not the case. These do not eliminate it. It reduces it.
Cause I, I think I thought it was interesting when you looked at the snow window and driveway for Sioux Falls. It says it's a frequent complaint.
The expectations are that there will be no snow. So, and, and that kinda takes us back to the, you know, why, why would you use a snow gate? That's really kinda the, the beginning of the whole thing. Is why would you use a snow gate? And it's basically to reduce or eliminate the ridge, both from the driveway and from the intersection. There are some advantages for the intersections. The disadvantage is going to be that you're, you're holding the snow for a period of time. You've gotta get rid of it at some spot. So at the end of a driveway, you're gonna open it up, especially with driveways that are, that are very wide, like the 36 feet wide driveways. On a heavy snow, you aren't gonna carry snow for 36 feet. You're gonna end up having to open it up at, at some point. And typically it's gonna end up dumping at somebody's mailbox or you're gonna cover part of their driveway. The mailbox is another common and frequent complaint is mailboxes being, you know, really buried in snow. The other, the other thing is that for the intersections, you'll end up having a lot of this snow. You've cleared the intersection with snow. But where are you gonna open it up? It's gonna be where those handicap quadrants are. That's another downside to it. You, you, you can only carry that snow so far. And there again, that 36 foot wide driveway is comparable to what the width of our streets are. And it gets to be too much snow. And when you open it up, it dumps it in a hurry out onto those quadrants. So that's a downside to it. And of course, in a lot of communities, those quadrants are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to clear.
So what you're saying is they may get a clearer driveway, not entirely free of snow, but basically they're gonna have to go out and shovel more on the quadrants if you own a corner lot.
Yes, and or, yeah, the, the driveways generally you'd say people probably are happier using the gates, but they're still gonna be unhappy because parts of it they have to shovel. And it's gonna be in front of their mailbox instead, which the mailman's not gonna deliver until you go out and clear that, so. For those people who have mailboxes on their houses, that's not a big deal. But for those that have the mailbox downstream from their driveway, it's a problem.
Do we have a pretty small percentage of homeowners that have no Boulevard? Where their sidewalk is right up to the street? Marshall Road, 13th. Is that a pretty small percentage in this community?
I think you'd be surprised how much curbside sidewalk we have in town.
There's some on North Main or up in the
North Lloyd. McGovern. There, there's a lot more spots than you'd
All the bike trails.
And, and there again, these, these gates are not a function that would be able to be utilized for sidewalks. There, you just can't carry the snow for that, for an entire block. You can only carry it for so far before you've gotta rid it or it's going over the top, outsides. It's gonna, it's, the snow has to go someplace.
Did you talk to other communities to get this information or did you just look it up?
No, I sent, I sent emails to them and then I visited with some of them.
So did they, did they say that it was a slower process?
I, yeah. Some of them will say no. The majority of them will say anywhere from 25 to 33% slower. And I think we, I'll, I'll come up on that here in a minute. But my thought process was 25% is a, a very good conservative number to use. One of the things that this chart, or you can look at your, the spreadsheet that Marie had copied for you that you got handed out in front of you. These are the same thing. This is laid out in a continuous thing, so you can see kinda the gaps in where we don't do stuff where the spreadsheets, it's a little harder to follow, but. And this is a day one, day two, day three. I think yours shows Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but it's day one, day two, day three. Orange would be contractor equipment. The blue would be city equipment and manpower. Bottom line is that it's, it's fairly well orchestrated. We have, we have spots at each one of these. Folks go, they do their thing. And by roughly 4:00 PM, we are done with our snow removal for the residential areas. If we reverse it and put them into the downtown area first, which is possible, it really doesn't change the timetable drastically. We're getting the, the downtown work done overnight. And then that next day, we're back into the residentials right away. But it's, the way we're doing it now, it's two different groups of people typically. Before, we used to use all of our guys, both the first shift and the second shift with just a minimal four, five hour rest in between. And that was really, really hard on them. Number one and number two, probably a lot less safe than we'd care to admit to. The third day is more of a cleanup process, working on cul-de-sacs, dead ends. If we have any downtown stuff, cleaning up our parking lots. If we haven't gotten it the first night, we're gonna get in there and take care of it that, that third night, so. I think I did put in the discussion here, kind of how many people were utilizing and we've got roughly 28 people, I believe, out that first, just the first phase trying to get things done. And you've got, right now, we've got 13 motor graders going all at once. At the beginning plus three, three loaders, three salt trucks and so on. It's, there's a lot of people out there all at one time. You're, you're roughly 30 guys out there. There it is. 28 members. And it goes through just the process we, we do. I don't know if you've had a chance to read those comments. I didn't really wanna dwell on it other than just trying to make sure that you were aware how many people are out there all at one time. Part of the, part of the discussion was, you know, of course, the, the snowgate stuff, if you end up with 25% reduction speed inefficiency. And part of that's due to the fact that you're gonna have some breakdowns. Part of it's due to the fact that there's more functions and those blades have to work a little harder and the operator's working harder. They're not able to drive quite as fast or they're gonna miss stuff. If that 25% is a reasonable number and we're using 13 motor graders, we will probably use 16 or need 16 motor graders. Or that process, we end up adding on how many hours at the back end? Well, our crew is already at 12 hours with the way we're doing it right now. I would hesitate to push them to a 16 hour day in that range. So what would end up happening is we would end up pushing it into a second day, which I don't think anybody would advocate. We certainly don't. The, so then, then it comes down to getting more equipment, more manpower or more contractors. We're already using all the contractors that are bidding our work right now. There just isn't enough steady work for them to justify them owning the equipment and, you know, four, four, five or six snow removals. And last year was a great example or, or two years ago where we had zero snow removals. That's tough for a contractor to pay for $250,000 motor grader. So that's, that's kinda the dilemma that they're in. So if, if we were to get contractors, chances are you would have to go to a guaranteed contract where they were at least gonna cover their front end costs to gear up for it. And you wouldn't do that just for those that, the newcomers coming in. That would be for all contractors that are helping you out at this time. So you could expect to have some additional fixed costs initially on your snow removal. If we decided to do it with our own crews, you're gonna have additional fixed costs. And we're saying that probably an additional three motor graders. Our challenge with that is that we've already got a lot of our crews tied up. And you can't really throw everybody at it because we still have other functions to take care of, including water main breaks and so on. So I did a, a quick summary on costs and it looks like if you were to go the route of adding three additional motor graders into the mix and trying to find some additional people to train in on motor graders. You'd have some costs in the neighborhood of $100, $117,000 additional per year on an average year, just to add that service. And, you know, the question is, is it worth it if you're going to get complaints on it anyway? Is the, the amount of service you're getting from it worth the additional $117,000? That's the, the question.
When you were talking to these people, did they say what their increased maintenance costs were due to the more wear and tear, more weight, more, you know, those kinds of things?
We didn't talk about that, but most of it, what we found is if you've got decent equipment, it's probably not as high. Not, not terribly high rather. It's more welding or just welding on wear plates. If you've got older equipment like I had in Jamestown, it was a really frequent occurrence that where that blade would go, a blade would go down because of the gate. And there again, it wasn't a super amount of cost. It was just the downtime and how much frustration the crews had having to wait to get another repair made. One other thing that, that limitation that, that I hadn't touched on earlier was the fact that a snowgate by its design will push you a little bit further away from the curb. So by its design, it's gonna cause the streets to narrow up a little quicker than the way we do it now. Where the, the, or our motor grader can rub the curb if we want to. They'll usually stay back just a little bit, but there's nothing to push them back. With the gate, you can't have it coming down on top of the ridge. So it pushes the motor grader operator slightly away from the winter each and every snow, so it narrows up quicker.
You know, if we get those great big snows that we've had in the past where you can't even see the intersections, are they even usable? Even on a small snowfall?
Small snowfalls, you can still
Have these great big
Yeah, they're still usable.
Yeah, they are. Okay.
Yeah. The, the limitation's gonna be at that, let's say six inch or a little bit less snowfall. You're gonna have a lot less effectiveness. There's gonna be snow boiling over the top fairly quickly. When you get into those whopper snows, those 10 inches, a lot of the cities just, they just don't even try to use them because they're just, they're just not effective at all. Sioux Falls with, I think it was one of the last snows they had last spring. That was the first time that they've, since they started using their, their snowgate equipment, that they were not able to use the gates at all because they were starting to see breakage on them. It, it must've been a heavier snow that, that was causing them grief. And so they do have limitations. They're not, it's not a one size fits all. Gonna be perfect every time. There's gonna be limitations to it. So with that said, we did, we didn't do any recommendations. This is purely for your, your review. There's no money in the budget at this point to, to gear up for this, so.
So once upon a time, we were at two days snow removal and then we went to this one day. What has been the response from the community going that direction?
By and large, most people thought it was a good move, especially those people that were on the second day.
Right. So have you seen decrease in complaints?
I'd say yes, especially the, the, the complaints about the length of time it takes us to do the work. The complaints about the snow in the driveway have remained constant throughout time. Probably the bigger complaints that we get, it hasn't been lately, it's not so much the amount of time. Now it's because we're doing a quick turnaround on, on towing, you know, the ticketing and towing portion of it is a little more intense and people that are unaware are probably getting caught a little quicker. Some of them had a full day to figure it out in the past. Now that afternoon, they're getting caught already being parked in a bad spot.
You know, being here when it was two days and then moving to one day, I, I don't receive any feedback now. Where before, when, you know, very large manufacturers calling you out to talk to you about, you know, getting their employees to work, which always seems a little bit strange to me, but you know, it's their concern. I think it's, you know, the standard needs to be one day. We cannot move back and jeopardize that. So if these snow gates are going to push us to additional 25% time without the three additional motor graders, then I am not, not in favor of this. I think we also set ourselves up for expectations will, will grow that their driveway is going to be cleaned. And every corner lot, we will now receive additional complaints because we'll just pile the snow up into that area. And so I'm, I am not in favor of snow gates at this point in time.
I have, I have not heard of any complaints of our snow removal since we went to the one day. Snow gates just kinda disappeared. I mean, they, they used to talk about them.
It's summer.
Yeah. Wait, wait till we get, wait till we get that 10 inch snow. This gentleman that came in
I, I didn't, I didn't get any complaints.
The gentleman that came in and talked to us about snow gates was probably the first time that someone's done that. And, you know, he had legitimate concerns and I understand that. But I don't with all the, the businesses out there that can help in those instances, I, I just, I think losing the one day turnaround is, is critical.
And I think that was part of when we had that discussion, when we changed it, snow gates were briefly talked about. But that's the reason why we really kinda pushed for the one day is because everything happens on one day. Downtown was quicker. A lot of the complaints we got was from downtown. Now that is getting cleaned quicker than what it did before because we aren't waiting on our crews to go down and clear the downtown. As, as someone who, 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 like I say, Sioux Falls, same level of service, I've never really seen that in residential areas because I visit friends all the time. And sometimes they wonder if they're ever gonna get plowed. And then they get a truck plow with no snow gate. So it, it is not a same level of service. And my big concern with this is, you know, are we gonna be able to put snow gates on our rental blades? How much extra would that cost?
The, the thought process for us was, we did, we did receive some concerns from at least one contractor. Well, we only have two contractors working now for us. But the one, you know, said, I don't know that my equipment will handle it. I, I'd not be really in favor of it. Bottom line is we could set it up where we put the snow gates on our rental blades. And then you'd have to pair up one non-snowgate blade with one of our rental blades. That way, you know, you'd, you'd be covered. But as I said in my discussion, the one, the one downside there is if you don't have them outfitted on all of your pieces of equipment, a blade with a snowgate goes down. That kinda renders the other guy or the other blade useless or, or helpless for a period of time.
And I actually talked to the Caterpillar representative. He said $1,500 on, $1,500 for the lease graders.
And roughly $5,000 for the five to six, no, $7,000 per, yeah.
So basically you're talking $10,000 per blade?
Yeah.
Yeah. Robin, your research was excellent. That's a very useful spreadsheet. Appreciate all the time and effort there. It makes the cost benefit analysis, just looking at it economically, a lot easier for us on the council to look at it. $117,000 per year added to the budget. You're looking at a slower process. Right now in five years, I haven't had a complaint about snow removal since sitting on the council. I think you can say what you want about having to shovel what's at the, you know, the driveway. But really the operation we have right now is near optimal. I think most people are happy with it. And seeing the comments from any other communities, the frequency of complaints certainly say, says that even where it's occurring, where snow gates are used, it's far from perfect. I think we have a good thing.
And it, it's, it's much better orchestrated over time. We've, you know, this, this actually, the intensity doing it in one day actually helped us probably get it more well orchestrated so that it could be pulled off this way. And our guys do a wonderful job.
David?
You know, we've had some pretty heavy wet snows in the last couple of years. What, what is the snowgate effective with those? I know my snow blower is not effective. But are snow gates still effective in those types of
Snowgate's effective. The, the problem is your traction with the, your drive wheels. With the all wheel drive blades that we're leasing now, there's less problems with that. With those that are the, just the rear tandem drive, you have to put chains on and even with chains, the heavy wet snows will bog you down to where it'll stop you did in your tracks. Then you have to back up and hit it with some speed. If you start losing speed, then it will, it'll just stop you in your tracks.
Does any of this equipment do harm to our, our surface, road surface? Or is it about the same as what we experience in the conventional?
The, the, the snowgate's not gonna do anything different. Occasionally, what'll end up happening, if you do bring it down or you still have it at the end of a driveway where there might be a, maybe you're a little too close to the curb, that's where you'll bust up the, the gate because it'll, it's, it's a dead, head-on collision basically for those. The other thing is when you're raising them up by the mailbox, if the mailbox projects just a little bit past the curb face, that's where you bust up the mailbox.
Anything further on snow?
It's kinda hard to get into this.
In July.
Anything else from you Lynn?
Can I just go back to Brett's report and in a comparison to last year with these numbers? Did you, have you seen any increase or decrease from
Where we currently are since we didn't have much snow. Our, our numbers in that area are gonna be down a little bit. But everything else appears to be about the same. You know, every year we, we go up. We're never going down with these. It's always going up. And unfortunately, sometimes it's the same people.
Okay.
But
So you're saying that education will not work?
We, we've tried.
Okay.
You know, and, and, and there's some things where what you're seeing here is, is, is the, the very strictest enforcement. You know, code enforcement officers will stop at somebody's door, knock on their door and say, hey, can you take care of your grass or do this or that? That doesn't show up here. And, and, you know, and one thing that Lynn pointed out is the number of complaints we had. What this shows is, you know, people don't think we, we do a lot or do a good job. This shows that code enforcement officers are very proactive with what they do. They don't just drive around town all day for the heck of it and enjoy the drive. They're actually doing something while they're out there and then this goes to show that.
I find it interesting that you had just as many vehicle related as grass and yard waste.
Anything else? Anybody?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by abundance. Would there be a second? Remley has seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.